Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and call it an order the May 28th Board of Commissioners meeting now that Julie Taylor's joined us. We'll get started. As always, we'll start with an opening prayer. We got Pastor Pete Audrich from Victory Community Church. Morning Pastor.
Morning. Amen. Father God, we just come to you today in the name of Jesus. Thank you for your goodness and mercy, God, in this meeting, Father, to just give us direction, God, in this city, God, in this county, Father, we need your help. Pray for all those that were affected in the storm, God. We pray, God, for your grace and that you would just give strength to those that are in trouble right now, God. We come to you today and thank you for everything you've done. Ask you to bless these men as their minds come together to work, that everybody might work as one, that we might complete and do what you've called us to do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pete.
First up, it's got courthouse renovation update. We do have, real quick, we can go and get this knocked out regarding the AV equipment for the three courthouses, or the three courtrooms, yeah. Seems like three courthouses. For the three courtrooms.
Price I got ought to be.
There was one adjustment that had to be made. They priced everything out for two tables in the courtrooms, and now there's going to be three. So for the additional AV equipment for that third one, it's going to be an additional amount of $6,344.31. So these will be, these are the amended software and hardware quotes. So Dale's been thoroughly evaluated this, and this appears this is what we're going to need. So if there's no, we got plenty in the contingency to cover. That's 275 budgeted, so the total's 263. So we're still really good on that. So if there's, are there any questions or discussions?
I don't have any more questions on that.
If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve all three.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes 3-0. Dale, thanks for all your work on this. It's very complex. Next up at the Highway Department, Chris. Good morning.
Good morning, Chris.
Morning. At the meeting minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, everyone should have received a copy of the May 8th Commissioner meeting minutes. Were there any changes or revisions?
I say no. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes 3-0. Okay, we'll go and jump to Highway, so we can get Chris. Chris moving in, but thank you, though.
Morning again.
Morning, Chris.
First thing I have is, it's the signatures of the approval of Bridge 14-06716 Rehabilitation Project, which is on Old Highway 50. It's kind of a, I don't know, standard procedure. They send me the front blueprint of the bridge plans, and the commissioners sign it, and the auditor tests it, and then I believe I sign it. I hope I meant to. It'd be horrible.
Yeah.
This is basically a signature sheet. It's from, that's from Lockmueller Group on one of our projects that we did. We're going to do it in 2025, and I've done, I've submitted the paperwork to NDOT. I'm a little tired today, sorry.
You guys are busy, I know.
Yeah, that's where, one of the bridges we took over on Old 50, we're going to rehab it. We're going to, I guess federal government through NDOT is going to give us 80% of the money for rehab that bridge. So that project there, Lockmueller, is going to be our engineering firm, and that's their plans that they, signature sheet that they have assigned. I don't know why, but.
I would go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the signature sheet from Lockmueller on the bridge project.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0.
Okay, I think I've already given some updates on the Old 50 that we're doing and the bridge, so I guess I don't really have anything else. If anybody's got any questions, we're doing storm cleanup.
Yeah, that's why I thought I'd go and keep you first, just to get you going.
Yeah, we got guys out there, so.
Busy weekend. Are you guys safe?
Hell, yeah. There was a lot of power lines. It was quite the, quite the weekend.
Yeah, never know.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions for Chris, Michael, Ron?
Good job.
I'll call you later about a robot.
I know you're busy now. I'm not going to bother you.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Next up, our county insurance, our favorite topic of the year. I know, this is going to be great. This is going to be so streamlined. I know, I appreciate all the information you guys sent the commissioners the past week, so we can review it. It's very, very helpful. Yeah, whatever. We studied it all weekend.
Let the dog eat it.
Now, this is for the better of rules we've had, so I've got good news. Of course, there's always mostly good news. I hate to say complete good news. Well, the front page is our summary sheet, and we currently, it's kind of broken into two categories. One is your deductible that you pay, which is 85, set at $85,000 currently. We have it inched that up over the years, it's been 50, then we went to 75, and now it's at 85. We're going to recommend you stay at 85, but, and then you go down the max amount of pocket, but keep in mind if you go to the expected cost, and I'll let, Amy, good God. I'll let, I'll let Amy explain how they come up with the expected cost, and then what the insurance company does is take 20.
If I was Amy, I'd make you explain it.
She does a much better job than I. So they come up to their analytic goal than what the expected cost is, and the insurance company takes that times 1.25. That's where you come up to maximum. So there's two stop losses. One is the $85,000 per person. Then you have a county max, which is that 3.5. Okay? So that's, but, that 3.5 is like, again, 25% of what the expected is. We normally give you what the expected is and go from there. The reinsurance cost has stayed. If you looked at the reinsurance, the fixed cost, that's what we know we're going to have to pay. It actually went down, and that's rare in today's.
Don't get me started.
Okay. So, but that's great news. The fixed cost has gone down. That's what you know we're going to have to pay. The other 2.9, you see down there, expected cost, okay? You subtract the 702 from the 2.9, so we're saying, we're calculating medical at 2.2. But that's a gray area. Amy's team does the analysis on all that, and they come up with a number that they think is going to happen due to past experiences, but that begins the gray area. Any questions on that? You might go to this, there is a laser this year. Go to the second page real quick, just for your information. You can see over the years, we've had lasers. One year, it was quite, you know, 575 laser. One year before that, we had two lasers, a 275 and a 400. The last two years have been good. We've had no lasers. This year, we are going to get a laser of 150. Questions about what the laser means to? Okay. Amy, go ahead and, everybody's got a sheet from Amy?
I believe this is in your packets as well. And this is what we sent ahead of time last week. So I'll just give you guys a little bit more context on where we've run year-to-date. So page three, we're looking at historic trend. Right now, national trend is 6.7% for medical and prescription drug claims. That's what the trend has been on average over the past six years. Your trend has ran actually negative 0.42%. So you guys are basically flat over a six-year period, which is great. We've had some ups and downs over the years. If you had run at national trend over the past six years, the county would have spent $4.8 million more than what you've actually spent. Moving on to page four, just a couple of additional contextual pieces. So up in the top left, we'll show the budget summary. We expect you guys are running at 100% of budget. I do think that'll go up just a little bit, knowing some other claims that are coming down the pike. Employee enrollment is up 4%, so naturally, we would expect some claims dollars to increase year over year. We are looking at a stop-loss plan year, so looking at August of '23 through April of '24. So this is a nine-month period that we're looking at. Total plan spend has been about $2.1 million. This time last year, it was $1.8 million, so we are up 12%. But again, keep in mind, our enrollment is up 4%. That $2.1 is broken out into claims of $1.5 million in claims, and then fixed cost right now about, just shy of $550,000. You do have some stop-loss reimbursements so far. You have one claim that has exceeded that spec deductible of $85,000. We do have more large claims. So large claims is defined as reaching 50% or more of that specific deductible, which again is set at $85,000. So again, we do expect your claims cost to go up for next year, as Paul kind of went over a little bit. I'll go through that in more detail on the next page. Any questions so far?
No, thank you.
So looking at the stop-loss cost summary that we have on page six here, this is a look at where we are currently, is that first column, the current fixed costs. The renewal, that's the initial renewal, and then the column that has the red box around it, that's our final negotiated renewal. So if I look at the total fixed costs in the current column, we're currently annualized about $710,000. Initially, the renewal from IISI came in at a 7.1% increase overall to fixed costs. Now, that's stop-loss insurance, and that's also fixed costs from UMR, that you pay them to administer the plan and access their network. So they initially came in at 7%. We had a competitive quote from Berkshire Hathaway, which drove down the renewal. So that gave us some leverage to drive down the renewal with your incumbent carrier, IISI. So as Paul mentioned, we're getting a slight decrease on fixed costs, so we're pretty pleased with that renewal. As you mentioned, we do have one laser. Initially, the renewal started out with four lasers that came in. We negotiated that down to just one at $150,000. So your max risk for that particular person, only that person, is $150,000 instead of $85,000. When we look at the expected costs, we are expecting that 7% increase. That's what the reinsurer is expecting your claims to be. So that's their underwriters are looking at your claims history and projecting forward what we think they'll be beginning August 1st of this year for the next 12 months. So that's an increase of about $200,000 to your expected claims. Your max claims, as Paul mentioned, we have that aggregate insurance, which is your max liability, max cap that we have. So that'll be 3.5 million. When we add in the additional risk that you're on the hook for, for the laser, you take that difference between the $150,000 and that $85,000. That takes your maximum, annual maximum with that additional laser liability to be 3.5 million. And these are all before you collect the employee premium. So the net cost of the county, you would subtract out what you're collecting from employees on the insurance side of things. So overall, your max cost, your max liability is going up 9.6%. We did have a lot of other carriers that declined a quote, just because of the competitive nature of your current rates, and some were uncompetitive. And then, just a note down there at the bottom of the fixed costs include the enhanced gene therapy program, which I sent some more detail in over email, but happy to answer any questions about that. All right, any questions before I turn it back over to Paul for a motion?
No, Amy just does some rough math here on Paul's sheet here. Based off the expected cost to the county and then the number of full-time employees. In 2023, we spent $13,855 per employee for insurance. 2024 will be $14,200. So just want to kind of get that number out there, just for all of our department heads, everyone hiring people, that we bicker over 3% versus 4%, and we're 3.5% as far as raises, but for every belly button, it's $14,200 in healthcare costs that we add on top of the salary. So we pay someone 40, $45,000, but then we're adding another $14,200 for benefits. And these numbers are hidden. The employees don't see them, our department heads don't see them. So I always want to be transparent with what the cost of employment is, and we're, on our employee side, they pay $283 a year out of pocket.
Back page I've got.
Yes. So if you, if you annualize that out for an employee only, I think it's like $281 a year, which is wonderful. We kept that low because of our benefit, because of our salaries. But again, going into the wage recommendation come June, I just want to make sure all of our department heads, our council, and our wage committee knows that, I mean, for an employee only, $281 a year for insurance is unbelievably.
I've heard of her.
I've heard of.
And that is at a $1,000 deductible.
Yeah, so it's, we've got, we've got to look at the entire picture. You know, we can increase wages and increase premiums, but anyway, but these numbers don't get advertised very often because there's so much data. So just wanted to reiterate the benefit that we're providing. So on that note, I don't have any other questions. The information you have sent in the past week or so has been extremely clear. So commissioners?
What we, we need is a motion to, I'm going to ask maybe two motions, but the one motion that we really need today is to lock in the IISI renewal, reinsurance rates, and UMRs or TPA. Because, again, we've talked about this in the past. We don't lock it in today. IISI could always change their rates at another laser or whatever. Once we say, yes, we want this, we're locked in. Something else could happen tomorrow. It's too bad.
Right, okay.
I'm fine with it.
Ron, any questions?
No, it's one of those necessary evils.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to approve IISI and UMR.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor?
Aye.
A motion passes 3-0.
The other.
I want to clarify that, not the insurance, but the increase is one of those necessary evils.
And I don't know if you want to make this motion today, but, you know, back on this benefits and payments, I don't know if you want to say we're going to keep the benefits the same and the pay the same. However, on, on this page, if you'll look at the, the HSA has to be increased by $100. So right now, we're at $3,200 HSA. It has to go to $3,300 to stay in compliance.
Right.
The family, I don't know if you want to keep it the same at 64 or raise it as well. You don't have to on the family. Individual's the only thing you have to raise.
Yeah, I would suggest we meet the minimums, because we have to. And then I'd also recommend that we keep all the out-of-pockets the same. So the additional $345 a year per employee, the county would cover, instead of passing that on to the employee, would be my recommendation.
Say that one more time.
Well, if you look at the out-of-pocket costs, 23 through 24, it's going to be about $345 more that the county's going to pay for the employee. So either we, we cover it, or we raise their out-of-pocket.
Yeah.
The Wage Committee, did they look at this at all?
We just got it. So Wage Committee doesn't have any of this.
Is there any way next time around, you can get that to us early and let the Wage Committee include that in what they're doing?
With the time of the renewal and stuff, it's, we have a pretty short window, but go ahead.
Right. On the reinsurance, because they look at data, and then they give you, what did we get there, like, you know, two weeks ago? And then we want to present it as quick as possible, so we can lock in the rate, if it's a good rate. As far as the health benefits to the county, that, that you could wait. If you want to talk about that, I was just thinking it was such a good.
Not a matter of waiting. It's getting early. It's, I think this should be included with Wage Committee's discussion.
Yeah, I think so, too. I mean, the timing's pretty close, and maybe the Wage Committee can even be, meet maybe a little later, so.
So they could look at what we currently have in place.
What we can do, we can make the recommendation, and then when we go into the budget session, these numbers can, although we recommended keeping all the out-of-pockets the same, we can still tweak that through the wage.
And that doesn't affect your reinsurance proposal that we just made. So that was the main thing that we were trying to accomplish today, was the reinsurance lock-in.
Okay. All right, well, I'd go ahead and entertain a motion to keep the 2024, 25 out-of-pockets the same as current.
You're going to raise that?
And increase the HSA to the.
To the $3,300. Yeah, so moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. Next up, we've got Clean Water Indiana Grant. Good morning. Morning.
Okay, so I sent in a short summary. I think you guys might have got it in your packets with some pictures. Basically, we started our Clean Water Indiana Grant in January. It took the education position from 1,155 hours full-time. With not having a cap on the hours, I've been able to go out and do a lot more, bring back a lot more new education for the district, and make new partnerships. As of last week, May 20th, I actually stepped out of that position. So we do not have an educator right now. We are trying to hire. I took Megan Frederick's position because she left the district. So we are actively trying to fill this position. We have a plan. With the funds that are not used from the grant, we actually have a few different options of what we can do at the end of the grant term to make sure the money isn't sent back. Looks better on our part. You guys have any questions?
This is the same grant that you guys came before us and asked, and we said, you know, later on, right now, we would probably revisit that again on the employee part of it. Right now, you actively don't have an employee for that position for a while.
Right. I, we still have education obligations scheduled. I have stuff scheduled up until September, and I will fill those until we get somebody. So I'm kind of playing two roles right now. We are actively trying to hire. We've got advertisements and pushing it.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. Is there anything we can do to assist, or?
Our first round, we, we've set every two weeks. So our first two weeks that we're waiting to receive applications, since that ends on Friday, then we'll have to go back and reevaluate and see what we need to do after that. We've got a couple of nibbles, but not anything major. So at this point, I don't know.
Yeah. Got it. Okay. Well?
No action required, is it?
I'm not seeing any.
History report?
The only thing I would just suggest, if you guys do hire somebody, just maybe let Jen know, and she can send an email out to the commissioners, letting know you guys have got somebody hired for the position.
Yeah, just let us know how we can assist.
Okay.
Obviously, what you'd be successful.
Yeah, I'll see what happens.
Okay.
Now, we're just.
All right. Well, we appreciate the update and being, and kept in the loop, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, got the EDC Airport Storage Hangar Lease before us. Just a quick recap, this is really one of the success stories of this courthouse renovation project. I think it was last September, after our joint meeting, we kind of had a miniature discussion after the meeting about our storage and what we're going to do, the fact that the airport needed another hangar. So with, I think within five weeks, they were able to find funding and get a hangar built.
Right.
To allow us to start moving in like that November of last year. So, so therefore, we've got storage space, and then once we're done, they'll have a hangar that the airport needs as well. So we do have at least $200 a month for the space, the storage, which is, we pay $500 a month now for.
For a little small space, yeah.
Current small space. So 200 is, is to make this a legitimate business transaction. That's the minimum that we, they can charge. So that's what we have. We will pay that out of one of our funds. Maybe county building. Whichever one we pay out of Hoover. Pay, pay the Hoover bill out of, so. Any questions, gentlemen? No.
Who drew the lease up?
Good question. It was between EDC, EDC sent us the lease. I think they probably used Brent Stuckey.
Hartbill.
Yeah. Because the only change we made was just the, was just on the payment, the payment, just to clarify the payment. It was a little confusing. Just make it even 200 bucks a month. So, yeah, Hartbill, and then we made a minor change.
So it says rent and utilities. Is that $2,400, 200 a month, cover both?
Yes, that, that was the confusing part. They wanted us to pay like a small amount for utilities, and then another amount for rent. And I said, look, just add them together, because we don't want.
So just even 200 dollars a month.
200 bucks a month, and that's all inclusive.
That's line 36100 on the county. Is that it there for the storage building? I just wanted to make sure there's enough money in there.
Okay.
Besides, there's $10,000 on account, so exactly how much comes out of there?
6,000.
5,500.
500 a month, so 6,000 a year.
Here, okay. So that should take. Yeah, so it should take care of it, yeah.
Okay, good. And then, the next May, obviously, we'd be moving back in, and then that's when we will move, everything reusable will move back in. Everything that's not reusable will put up Russian, right of it. So, okay, if there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the airport hangar lease.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold.
You might want to make that, it's actually two leases, right? Just one, one figure, two leases? This one is just one, okay.
Good question.
I know the one was for utility and one for the building, I wonder what it was.
They're, they're combined.
Okay. So moved on that motion.
Well, now that, hold on, now you got me confused. Or no, you don't have me confused. There's, one says a commercial lease, and one says a land lease agreement. Okay, there are two leases. This is between the, okay, this is between the Board of Aviation and the Economic Development.
Okay.
Okay. This is between Economic Development and the Commissioners.
Okay.
We have the one lease, the others.
That's right. That's between those guys. All right, so I'd entertain a motion for the single lease.
Yeah, so moved.
Is a motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes 3-0. Great. Yeah, that was great teamwork. Matt Meredith really did an incredible job getting that hangar built in five weeks. And it's still standing, so it's great. All right. Now I lost my agenda. All right, meeting adjourned. All right, next up, got the EMA, bunch of acronym grants. Scott, how are you? So tired, yeah. Kind of a boring weekend.
Yeah, nothing else to do. This grant is similar, almost exactly like the grant last year that we done for law enforcement for the 800 radios that's interoperable between our county and other counties in case of mutual aid. So this grant is for the fire departments. This allows the fire chief and their command staff to have radios and new radios put in the apparatus so that they can communicate. So the current radios that they're using are like what the law enforcement had. They're 12, 15 years old and will become unusable in the very near future when they switch over to the Phase 2 system. So this is just replacing those. We was awarded the grant last year, so this year's, we don't know if it will be accepted or not, so we just give it a try.
Okay, good.
How many radios think we can get out of that grant, think?
Uh, this one?
Yeah.
Find the quote here.
I know we had a few fire departments said they could fund most of the radios in. I know we had a few fire departments, so they could fund most of the radios and some of them couldn't, so that would help out a bunch. Is it, so this is still the eight hundred back here at radio?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, this is still the eight hundred, okay.
Yeah, the VHF, the federal government won't support the VHF system.
Okay. Looks like there's thirty-four portable radios and seventeen single-control mobile.
Yes, that's what I see, yes. And that, like I say, that just goes to the chief and their assistant chief and maybe a first officer. It's only three that get portables.
Okay.
They're just basically for command and communication.
Right.
So, do you guys determine how many each fire department gets?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
That sounds good.
Looks like a great, a great cause. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve the grant application.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes three zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Just an update on the weather real quick. We've, you have the National Weather Service, got them coming in later today to take a look at things. We believe it's probably straight light winds with individual pop-up tornadoes along the line. So, they bounce around from location to location, and it's hard to get a true path where they're at. They may only last a minute, two minutes. It's very hard for the radar to pick up, that's the reason they usually put out the warnings so broad, because you just can't pinpoint where that tornado could pop out of. So, we've seen some areas that look like there has been, you know, a touchdown, but it's just very brief, and then it goes back up and travels on and comes again, so. So, we'll, we'll keep looking at it and see what's going on. And I did receive your email from the park, and so I'll see if I can get the Weather Service to stop in over there and take a look at that as well.
And bonds.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott. Okay, next up, gets us, Commissioner, for the elevator invoice request. Looks like we got the elevator fixed, it was one of those things that had to be fixed, so.
Right.
Yeah, so we're looking to approve the payment come from the commissioner's fund, building fund, for the amount of ten thousand eight ninety-four.
What's it look like, Michael?
It should look like these three, I just laid them up there this morning.
Oh, yeah, I got that, I made that the budget number. We're good, okay. And this was for the NX?
Yes.
Okay.
We've had trouble with that elevator since, I think, since day one.
Yeah.
Why was that?
It just.
I think the vendor that was selected.
Selected.
Yeah.
We tried our hardest to get a different vendor on that elevator, but when we signed the contract, that's what it was.
So, these parts are from a different vendor?
Yes.
No problem.
Scott's got an invoice here in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars and forty cents to be paid out of the building, commissioner's building fund. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Okay.
And then the courthouse?
So, on the courthouse elevator, we have work that has to be done. Basically, they're called guide shoes. So, it, the original guide shoes are still on there from nineteen twenty-nine, because they were just so overbuilt, they have worked all this time. But since we're doing, we have it closed down, now would be a perfect time to replace those and update that system there in the amount of five thousand two hundred seventy-nine dollars.
This is still the same guys that done the work on the bottom of that chapter, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Excellent.
What was his name again?
It is Resurgent Elevator.
Yeah.
Jesse.
And then, these two will be paid out of the courthouse contingency.
So, that's work to be done for the, for the track and the shoes, and the other ones just for the cab, to replace the cab.
Yes.
The whole cab or just refacing the cab?
Basically, a refacing, yes.
Okay.
It'll be a new lowered ceiling, something like we have here in this elevator. The only thing it does not include is the flooring, so I want to wait until we have everything done in the courthouse. We're only talking to square and a half of flooring, so. That's something we take care of later on out of our budget, so. Everything else will be replaced, be modernized. The one that's in there is from the early seventies. Bring it up to date and have it looking good with the rest of the court.
And cleaned up, it's not smell like an old musty elevator.
Yes.
I'm fine with moving for both those. I mean, regarding that courthouse project, we probably need to get the elevator up to date too.
Yeah, what do you think, Ron?
Don't want to wear an old pair of shoes with a new suit, do you?
I don't know if they're comfortable, you know? Get that new pair of shoes and they start causing blisters. This is one of those decisions where I think we need to do it, but it's definitely one of those cosmetic things where I think we need to do it, so I would.
I've got a lot of good service on that elevator, so it's time to refresh it a little bit.
Yeah. Okay, so, got two invoices here, one for five thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars, one for twenty-eight thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars to be paid out of the courthouse contingency fund to update the elevator at the courthouse. So, I'd entertain a motion to approve both.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes three zero.
Thank you, guys.
Hey, thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott, appreciate it.
Next up, I've got the credit card resolution. We've discussed this in the past, we just need to have a formal motion on this. We've actually had this finished in May, March eighth, just regarding all the departments that are under the commissioner's credit card resolution and what the process is. So, we just, I failed to make a motion to approve that back in March, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes three zero. Okay, a not-for-profit request, so we will be receiving, actually, we've got all those here.
You got them already.
We'll schedule a budget session for the commissioners.
Anything raised on that? Doesn't show yet.
Okay, it was, it's actually a very, very reasonable.
Request, okay.
Ish. Better, better. You know the game, you ask for three times, and hope you get.
Get something.
Something, and no disrespect to these organizations at all, but.
Well, we did, we just set a cap on the budget for donations, so.
We did, so we're, so the cap is one hundred and thirteen thousand, the request is one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, so. Okay, we'll take those under advisement. And then, we'll schedule that June. Yeah, well, maybe we'll get that done today, so, okay. I guess there's credit card. Okay. Anything else? Commissioners?
I had requested that we talk about the Olan Building and the Westgate property, and if you want to put off, we can. I just want to clean the paperwork up on it. According to the bond documents, once the bonds were paid off, both property at Westgate and the Olan Building was to be transferred to the county. And then, at that point in time, if the county wants to transfer it back to the foundation, they can do that. But I just want to make sure this doesn't step up and bite somebody down the road. So, I'd ask that to be put on the agenda for the next time. Give our attorney a chance to read bond documents. But the way the bonds were written, as soon as they were paid off, those properties should have been transferred to the county.
Okay.
Where are they at on Olan and those buildings, the bonds, are they? Everything's paid off, everything's paid off.
Yeah, we paid those off in the next eighteen.
That's what I thought we did a couple of years, yeah.
Okay. Would you mind emailing Bob Gury, maybe have him take the initial lead on?
He would not have the bond documents, the county attorney should have the bond documents or I smell it.
Okay. We're just trying, and again, we definitely need to look into that, just try and minimize the cost.
What should have happened when they were paid off, the foundation should have gotten written notifications that they were paid, which never happened, and it just slipped through the cracks. I don't want, I don't want the commissioners, at the end of the day, come back and say they have to give the property because they can use it for leverage in new projects. We just need to clean it up.
Yeah. All right, I'll reach out to Bob Gury and just see what they can find. I don't care for our county attorney to do it, but dinner bucks an hour, I don't know how many thousands of dollars I'm going to spend. I mean, maybe him and, between the combination of the two, we'll get it done. The next commissioner meeting is June eleventh, I will be on a mission trip on June eleventh. We can, we can put it on that agenda or the twenty-fifth?
Waiting, I just cleaned up.
Okay, let's put it on the June twenty-fifth meeting, that would give them a month, so, okay.
Get through it.
All right, no, it's great. All right.
If you want me to, I'll reach out to Bob and see what he's got and explain it to him.
If you wouldn't mind, that would be great, and then if he needs grant, by all means, yeah. Okay, if there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to approve payroll claims and to adjourn the meeting. A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes three zero.